Yeah. It's just the past key.
Yes, he does say that, yes.
Yeah, I think that's... We have no more spare parts.
It's time to deal with the time.
For years I've heard from Francis that they don't make parts for it anymore. And in this case, they did make them.
It's true.
They don't make parts for this.
They don't.
We scrapped until there's no...
Oh, we rebuilt them so many times. It's...we know our money is worth it well. The time and attendance system. We put it out for bid. Some of the criteria were that we were able to do an interface with our Alio accounting system. And that was part of this bid there. They're all networked. They work with our proximity cards. So that instead of having to swipe them through the magnetic stripe, they can go up and just use their prox cards to go up like the doors and clock in and clock out. They have a web interface so that our employees can check their time online. A lot of other features that are built into this. This is a fully featured time and attendance system for it. We put it out to bid. We put this out to a lot of vendors. We received three back, mainly because not many of the vendors interface with the Alio system very well. But this is one we know. It's got a very good performance record. Our county is using this system. They've been on it for a number of years. And it's really good feedback on this particular one.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Time Clock Plus for $48,187 for the new time and attendance system.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. The next thing to bring before you is a...this is more of a thing that we need to have to meet some of the state guidelines that we have and meet a lot of the requests for grandma and some of the other things that are in place. And this is for an email archiving system. We are going to be changing students over from our Netmail system that we have this year to Office 365 in the summer. And we need something to help us with archiving on our email for both our staff and our students so that we can keep a clear record of what we need to get for those. And we put this out to bid. And the solution that came back, which fits well within the parameters, a lot of...few of these systems are appliance-based where you just put an appliance in there and set it up and off it goes. Some of them are systems that hook up on virtual servers for us. And we put this out. And Messaging Architects with their Netmail Archiver came in with a really good functional system for us. And it was selected for with $28,500.
So all these services we're accepting or purchasing tonight, are they till they run out the parts aren't used anymore? Or what are they?
Well, we've been complying with, like for instance, the email archiving. We've been complying with a very kind of a lopsided backup system that we have to use to go through. And it's a very cumbersome type of system. We have to go through and find emails in it that fits on the back of our group Y system. What this will do is it will give us the real-time tracking and give us the ability to pull things and sort them and get them ready for any discovery that we might have, any grammar requests, anything like that that needs to come through.
Do they talk to the other systems like the SIS system? Or do they not need to really?
No, this one doesn't need to talk to the other systems. This one just sits right in between our spam filter and our email system.
My own...
Yeah, my own.
I'll make a motion that we would go ahead and purchase the email archiving system for the district and student email. I'd go with Messaging Architects Netmail Archiver for $28,508. How was that?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And then the next thing is the monitors for the CTE labs. With us taking...putting all these student devices into the high school, one of the things that we're going to be doing is in all of the business labs in the CTE department, we're going to be pulling the computers out of five of those labs. And in their place, we're going to replace them with a large screen monitor and then a dock, the docks to the device itself. And what that will do is that will allow the students to come in, plug into the dock just with their device. And they'll have a keyboard and a mouse. We'll use the existing keyboards and mice that we already have. And they'll be able to just be able to use the business labs with the large screen monitors. And we'll do that more and more as we move along. We'll add more places that have that capability. But this will take care of our CTE program for us. Then we'll take the computers that we have in the CTE program. And this coming year, we'll redistribute them out to our elementary schools and use them out in some of the lab...for some of the lab replacements that we have in elementary schools. And it should work quite well for us.
That's a great idea.
So does each CTE lab get the monitors?
They'll get a monitor. Yeah, each one will get a...
One lab?
Each lab has about 32 to 34 stations in it. And we'll pull the computer out and put a new large screen monitor with the dock for every one of the stations. And so the kids, like I said, will be able to just come in and plug in and have the larger screens to do some of the things that they're looking to do.
Pretty cool.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the monitors and docks for Los Hatch High School CTE classes. Name 132 monitors for student connections in the CTE labs by BLCM, $165.43 apiece for a total of $21,832.76.
Does the docking need to pass?
That is separate.
Separate motion.
So I have a motion on the monitors. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I want to entertain a motion on the docking stations.
I'll make a motion for the docking stations for the CTE labs, 32 docking stations for BLCM, $49.28 apiece for $9,744.96.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
So not very busy. Busy, busy upcoming year.
It's the summer and getting ready for the new school year. It's exciting.
We should ask questions later. It's okay. This is replacing what we have.
This is replacement, yes.
I'd make a motion to accept the bid for now, $12,536.34 from the large monitor.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item seven, action seven.
For the asphalt maintenance for the school district for this year. It is a slurry seal. Last year, you'll recall, we did half of the high school. This year, it'd be the south half of the parking lots of the high school. And the parking lots and playground at Heber Valley Elementary. I would ask for a motion on each of these. We are recommending the low bid of Morgan Payman at both locations.
Separate motion for the high school and another motion for Heber Valley.
Right. We did expect that we would award them separately even though it's the same vendor gave both.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for Morgan Payman for Los Hatch High School bid for asphalt maintenance for 2014 for $38,860. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to accept Morgan Payman for asphalt maintenance for 2014 for East Elementary for $23,665 apiece.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, item nine of eight, carpet machine for Rockland Middle School.
This is on the fiscal year 15 budget, so beginning July 1st. Yes, as you'll know, there is one price. This is a combination machine, vacuum and carpet extractor. It would be for their hallways. They have a lot of carpet. There was only one manufacturer we could find that made a machine that did both and one vendor in this area that carried those machines. So we're recommending the bid from Waxy Sanitary Supply for $12,899.42.
Is it a replacement machine or is it a big...
This is a replacement.
This does both carpet and tile?
This does carpet, but it does both vacuum and extract. So it cleans the carpet as well as vacuums it.
I'll make a motion to accept the purchase of the sweeper extractor for Waxy Sanitary Supply, $12,899.42.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, furniture bid for Tempanoche Intermediate School portable classrooms.
So this is the furnishings for the two classrooms and the portable at Tempanoche Intermediate School. It is a state purchasing contract and the total is $11,312.19.
Yeah, your classroom is...
Correct. Desk, teacher's desk, file cabinets, cubbies for coats.
I'll make a motion that we approve furniture for the Tis portable classrooms from Birdcom Company at the price of $11,312.19.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item number 11, discuss this removal at Midway Elementary School.
We skipped number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Number 10 is for...this is a replacement scrubber for Los Hatch High School. We do have three beds. And we are recommending Utah Valley, it's actually HEICO, for $13,385.
I'll make a motion to accept the Utah Valley $33,385 for the scrubber for Los Hatch.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, sorry. Item number 11, discuss this removal at Midway Elementary.
As part of the air conditioning project, there are two areas at Midway Elementary that still have a little bit of asbestos. One is ceiling tile in the entryways in the upper section. It's a good time to get rid of those since they're going to be running piping over that ceiling tile. Also, there's floor tile in the cafeteria. And I've proposed, and it has been approved in the budget for fiscal year 15 to replace the cafeteria tile, which is the current tile is asbestos. So this price is to remove both the ceiling tile in those entryways and the floor tile in the cafeteria. And we're recommending that Fresh Air Environmental Solutions award that bid for $13,963.
Will this completely remove all the asbestos out of that school?
Everything from the inside of the building. All known, all known asbestos, so.
And how, what about our other schools? Is this the last one too?
We have very little known asbestos in our schools. I'm trying to think. I knew Midway had this little bit. Trying to think of...the others, I believe, are pretty much asbestos-free as far as we know.
Because we had such a wonderful experience with our abatement at that old high school, did we not give them a chance or opportunity to go with the state?
We did check the statement first. They indicated that due to their workload at the end of the fiscal year for other customers, they were unable to do it within our timeframe, so.
What is our time frame?
The ceiling tile has to be removed the first week of June to accommodate the air conditioning project.
Can't do that project.
The floor tile can't wait until the first week of July, so.
And we're on schedule to have air conditioning in both those schools, according to school year.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve for asbestos abatement for Midway Elementary. Award the contract to Fresh Air Environmental Solutions for the bid amount of $13,963.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 12, H-back upgrades.
So this is for fiscal year 15. This is...we still had eight rooms at Tempanoche Intermediate that did not have air conditioning? No. That would be the next one. So we still had eight rooms at Tempanoche that did not have air conditioning? And then it is a replacement of the furnaces at Los Hatch High School North Campus. The low bid was KHI Mechanical, which is who we propose at both locations.
Do you need that separate altogether?
I would like that separate as well.
I move we approve KHI Mechanical for the H-back upgrade for Tis with a bid of $17,930.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion for Los Hatch High School.
I'll make a motion for Los Hatch North Campus, KHI Mechanical for the H-back upgrades for $7,930. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So that moves to 14, Architect.
That brings us to 13.
Oh, 13. Okay. Controls, okay.
13, this is an upgrade to the head end of our main control system, HVAC control system for the district. It is Utah Yamas Controls. It is a state purchasing contract for upgrade to that system. So this will make it the most current system and will keep us being able to be supported. The amount is $42,415. And this is in fiscal year 15.
So is that system housed?
The head end is here at the district office and then there are portions of that at each school, so.
We just had one company get that.
It is a state purchasing contract.
State contract, okay.
And it has to be them because it is an upgrade to their system, so.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the H-back controls upgrade for the district from Utah Yamas Control. Utah Yamas Control. Amount of $42,415.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 14, Architect Engineer List for Small Projects Approval.
There are two ways to procure architects and engineering services. If the fee is expected to be over $100,000 each time you procure that separately, if the fee is expected to be under $100,000, you can yearly update a list of those interested in working on what's considered small projects. We established this list last year, so this is an update. We allowed all firms once again to submit. Those firms who were already on the list could just give some updated information this year to indicate that their firm had not significantly changed. We did have five new firms submit. We had some from last year who did not resubmit. They were scored. All firms who scored over 70 are allowed to be on the list as per the specification that we put out. Actually, everyone that applied did make it 70 or above. So this is the resulting list and we're recommending that that be approved as our list of architects and engineers for small projects for the coming year.
Did you miss them in order of points?
They are, they are.
So we just start at the top of the list and then move over again?
In every year, you can, if it's under $100,000, you can start that over if that is, you don't have to keep going. Like somebody could get a contract two years in a row. They could. You just establish a method to randomly go through the list and use them.
That's our patterns, make the start at the...
Start at the top and move down one and then, and then just move from there.
We use more than, we do use more than one architect for giving the numbers of projects that we have.
But we look at this list every year.
Correct.
We update it.
It's refreshed every, it's refreshed every year.
We may not get to one of these kind of projects.
Correct.
And then they just resubmit again depending on where they end up in the...
Correct.
In the order on the score.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Architect Engineer List for Small Projects for the upcoming 2015.
Beginning now.
Correct. It goes through April 15th, I believe, 2015.
And so beginning...
Beginning now with your approval.
Now through April.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francis, for all your hard work.
Thanks, Francis.
Okay, item number 15, 2014-15 Board Meeting Calendar. Superintendent Shoemaker.
Beautiful picture on the wall is our meeting scheduling and other things related to the, to the board. Is that the board meeting calendar there?
It is the school calendar.
And the board, it's all calendars.
Pink ones are board accounts.
Sure looks like it. Right. So when you look at the pink ones up there, those, that is the suggested dates for our board meeting, board meetings. And we are required in the statute to do this in advance. And so tonight's, we're asking you to approve this so that we can get this published or notice for our public and ask when our meetings will be held. Now, of course, time to time we change and add to this. And this gives us a structure for our public to have. So I don't know if the board has any questions on these particular dates.
Just an explanation, on February 8th, instead of the 3rd, Thursday, we've got it scheduled for the 4th Thursday.
Conflict.
Probably had a conflict with the... I've had to control trustees' meetings and...
For me, for superintendent.
And state superintendent meetings and...
Okay, thank you.
And that would be the same with, if you look down. What about our budget hearing? Are we going to...
I mean, you...
It's always a conflict that third, might say Thursday, Friday.
So what we're looking for is the board to approve this, this particular motion, the board meeting calendar.
Did we already approve that 2014-15 calendar?
That's coming up in the...
This is our, this is our board. No, the one, this one's already approved.
This one, this calendar's already done for the school year, okay?
15-16.
15-16.
It's coming up, okay.
This is just...
This was, we already thought, we already thought about that last year.
This is our board, this is this meeting's calendar.
With all the other stuff on it that's approved last year. I'll make the motion that we approve the board meeting calendar as added to the 2014-15 school calendar that previously was approved.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 16, School Trust Land Plans and Retention.
If you have any information, the trust land plans for next school year, I've taken the time to review each of these plans individually. We do not have to take a motion on each one. We made that decision last year and you don't need to necessarily do that. I've reviewed them, looked at the goals that are in there, the budgets that are placed within each one. I feel that, feel that they're in compliance with the statute, feel that they're aligned to our school goal, our district goals. And frankly, as I've had accountability visits and meetings with principals over the year and in thinking about next year, these goals here, I think are completely in line with the things that we would expect them to be working on in your schools for next year. So I don't know if the board has any questions relative to any of these, but it would make, I would make the recommendation that the board approve the school trust land plans.
I was impressed, sorry, Shannon.
Oh, I was just, I was impressed too. I was just going to add a friendly suggestion that maybe in future, they can show a linkage to our school district's strategic plan.
That's a good idea.
So that we see that.
See the alignment there.
There were more of you that were leaning, I just didn't scell it out.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I saw the numbers, but we'd like to see it spelled out more. That's a great...
I think our public deserves to see how the...
How each school is fitting into it.
Well, yeah, it's good for the community councils. They're the ones who put these together, helping them to us for them to identify how closely we are working and tied together.
We will discuss that if we can just make this approved.
I was just going to add to that and say I was impressed that they're all focusing on that, the strategies that we have set and how important we each one have realized that KLC involvement in these schools seems to be, that's just part of the culture now. And I think that's why we're seeing success in those schools. And I just appreciate that they recognize the importance of that and continue learning for the teachers, which just increases learning for the students, which is our goal, so. Yeah, tell them thank you for all that work. It's hard to get those together, I know.
I want to publicly thank those who are willing to serve under community councils and helping the process because that's volunteer position.
Principals, yeah, for sure.
Principals, others involved.
So Superintendent Shoemaker, is it okay to make just one?
Yes.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we would approve the school trust land plans as presented to us from each of the schools for the 2014-15 school year. With, are you going to want them to add that to the plan this year? Is it too late for this year to add those things to identify it?
No.
Because they have to be added?
Their boards will all pass off on this and done.
But we don't want to add that in the future.
By adding in the future.
That will be one of the things we discuss in what kind of meetings.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 17, band uniforms. Principal Kelly.
I don't know how Paul Swett and Chris Balla got on the agenda, but Balla is the band instructor and he is at a concert tonight.
Which I had to get after him. I went to the concert that he held at their middle school and it was enlightening that I said, "You can't schedule your high school concerts on band..."
On board meetings.
On board meetings, so next year we're going to be better prepared.
Next year will make sure.
Sorry, you were...
That's all right. So you have, I think, a packet and there it is before us. It's been a big desire of Los Hatch High School to upgrade and to get marching band uniforms. We feel like this is something that's been lacking in our school. And so this year, we have sent out a request with these pictures attached, asking people to bid or to give us the design based on these type of bids. And it's been a process of, it's taken a long time of elimination...
And it's been a process of, it's taken a long time of elimination and trying to get the right look for Los Hatch High School and getting the band instructor and myself and others to, to see the same vision and the same picture. And so we wanted to keep with the traditional look and so that those pictures were for that purpose. After much deliberation, we had a few people that gave us some sketches and we had one company who really was showing interest and the name of that company was DeMulan. They had a representative that came out from Illinois and sent us this picture and through a process, he kept telling us, you're doing this the wrong way. You have to have me come out, you have to design the uniform, we have to then send that out to specs, we're kind of doing this backwards. And me not being a band uniform buyer, I wasn't sure of how that process worked. I'm now kind of fully educated. I do, I know all about it. And so he came out and designed and had a computer program and we said, no, we don't like that, we like this, we don't like that. The other companies send us sketches, but when it was time to come out, they wouldn't come out. So we, we have taken the specs, we sent those specs out. DeMulan actually constructed a sample for us. He came out, he gave that to us and we had a student try it on and I think you have pictures of that in your packet as well, of the students standing outside the high school with the band uniform that we actually designed with the, with the rep. We think it's very traditional, we do like that. Do you have this picture right here?
I don't.
Do any of you have this?
I have it in my packet, I'm just pulling it up.
You need to make sure you have that because you're going to see, we altered it quite a bit from the original drawings that you have.
I can't get, I can't get home, I can't get on.
Unfortunately, he had to take the design back because apparently with band uniforms, they take that model, they hang it up and then they individually make each one to fit the specs of that sample that they made, so he had to take it back to the company. After he came out, he gave us the spec sheet that you have. We then forwarded that to the four or five, there's only four or five companies in the nation that do band uniforms and DeMulan was the only company that would bid it. We had people that said, we don't make that uniform. We had companies that said, we're not just going to give you a bid for use in giving someone else a bid. We recently sent it to another company, they didn't even respond to the email, did not return phone calls. So we have one bid from one company and there's actually three sheets there in your packet. We have a bid for a quantity of fifty, we have a bid for a quantity of sixty and obviously the price goes down, and we have a bid for a quantity of seventy with also a drum major included in that. It is our desire that, that you approve this tonight. We wanted to have these for fair days because we feel like this is going to make a big difference. I'm not sure that's going to happen now because of the lead time. It was spring break, it was approximately the time, but we were having trouble finding bids and we didn't want to bring it to you guys until we had?